I think so.
Oh, it's bad from both sides, I'm sure. I was trying to raise the flag earlier.
Good afternoon, we're back from executive session, we will now go to committee of the whole. We have six items, the first item is a resolution changing Eighth Street to one-way northbound between McKenzie and Harris Avenue to Fairhaven. Michael?
Yes, under the advice of city legal counsel for various reasons, I'm going to recuse myself from any participation in this decision and I'll come back in when this item is over.
Also for the record, councilwoman Roxanne Murphy is excused today. Okay, who, Ted?
Yes, sir, I'll start it off, Ted Carlson, Public Works Department. The item before the council today is a resolution that would change Eighth Street between McKenzie and Harris from its current configuration of a two-way street to one-way for northbound traffic. And there's some history on this particular area, in fact, previous council action back in 2006, the council approved a settlement agreement with the developer and with the neighborhood and with a resident of the area that ultimately said that this portion of Eighth Street would be closed to traffic and only be open for emergency vehicles and pedestrian or non-motorized traffic. And so we're here today to reconsider that, in fact, actually that settlement agreement has gone away from the city's perspective because the development that it was tied to went away, never actually occurred. And since that time, the city has been successful in obtaining a Department of Ecology grant to do stormwater water quality treatment for this area of not only Fairhaven but the greater area, about ninety acres of currently untreated stormwater runoff that makes its way to Patton Creek. And for those that have been down there, the city is currently going through a construction project to build a stormwater facility in this very section of the Eighth Street right-of-way to provide water quality treatment. And as we went through that process to permit the stormwater facility, the city had to go through the same permitting process that everyone goes through and received a shoreline permit that approved or authorized us to do this work, but also required us to replace Eighth Street in its current configuration of a two-way street with the same footprint, twenty, twenty-four-foot wide paved surface. And as we went through that process, staff got together and talked about what perhaps would be a better alternative than rebuilding Eighth Street to its current full width and limiting the amount of pavement through there to a narrower section that would only accommodate one-way traffic, but would still allow the city to maintain this newly-built stormwater facility and facilitate transportation circulation in the area, perhaps in a better way than closing it off altogether, at the same time being mindful of the impact to Patton Creek, the riparian area there and trying to build something that was located as far away from the creek as possible, provide the appropriate environmental benefit, but also serve the needs of transportation. So you have these maps, but I'm gonna facilitate the discussion, pull up a couple maps, and I apologize for the public, it's a little bit challenging to read, it's a little small, thank you. But to orient everyone, here's Harris Street, here's Eighth Street, the section we're talking about right here, and McKenzie. The Bellingham Tennis, the Bellingham Tennis Club here to help orientate people further. So this is existing conditions, you have a street right here, it's narrow, but it's two-way traffic and it serves this area, you can see Patton Creek and the buffer, here's the hundred-foot buffer back from Patton Creek. So that's existing conditions. And as I mentioned, the city received the grant and subsidized that or supplemented that with city stormwater funds to build this stormwater facility. It is a vault, there's some challenges with providing stormwater water quality treatment to that large of an area, as I said, it's about ninety acres, that's being treated right here. So there's some significant-sized pipes that have already captured both public and private stormwater from the larger ninety-acre area, and it's all brought through an enclosed system down to this area. We went through a process, selected an engineering firm through a competitive process, selected the most qualified firm to work with our staff to site the stormwater facility, not knowing exactly where the best place to put it in, when we got the grant, we knew we wanted to build it, but we had to go through a siting process. And we also had to go through a process to select the appropriate alternative, so we considered different types of treatment. But given the challenges of the amount of water, the grade, the topography there, so the velocity of the water, the type of soils that we had, all the things that we considered, we came up with this vault system within the Eighth Street right-of-way. And what you're seeing there is what's permitted, the, what color that would be, but purple or magenta, that's representing the stormwater facility itself. This would be a little riparian area planted, perhaps a rain garden to treat some stormwater runoff from this area. And then here's the paved section to be restored to its width that it's already at, so you'd still have two-way traffic. That's what's permitted right now, if the city was to go forward and just build what was permitted, that's what we would build. This shows the settlement agreement that I referenced earlier, and again, the settlement agreement called to close Eighth Street from Harris to McKenzie, so this would be closed to the public. It would be open, there would be a hard surface there so that emergency services could get through there, so you'd be able to drive fire truck through there, aid car, and other type of official vehicles as needed. And then you would have a larger, non-motorized section over here so that the pedestrians could come across the greenways trails and access Harris that way. There's also another greenway trail on the west side. And then for traffic that was visiting the tennis club, we have to provide them access, they need to be able to have their service vehicles come in, take delivery, and without having the access along Eighth Street anymore, we'd have to build, what the settlement agreement calls for is a roundabout or a circle that would allow vehicles to get in and out, and it's a little bit challenging because the settlement agreement calls for building that, says we can encroach into the buffer to do that, but can't encroach much further than the paved hard surface now, so you don't have a lot of room there. So we depicted it as more of a hammerhead, but that would take some construction. So that's the settlement agreement. And the final option I wanted to show you is the proposal. So what city staff is proposing, again, we worked with the planning department, worked with the city attorney's office, the various components of public work, stormwater, transportation, and working with the neighbors there, came forward with an option that we think might be the preferred option. Obviously, the stormwater facility is there, we don't want to encroach any further into this area, and we can narrow the paved surface down to one-way traffic and build a pedestrian facility to the far east side of the right-of-way, as far away as we can from Patton Creek. So that's our proposal, but anytime we change the configuration of a public street, it requires council action, whether we're closing the street or we're converting the street from two-way to one-way, and that's what we're before council today, to have that discussion with the city council. Steve Sundine is here, he can speak to the permitting process that we went through, and he was also staffed during the earlier discussions as part of the development that never moved forward. Eric Johnston, acting in his capacity as the interim city engineer or the traffic engineer and also overseeing some of the issues associated with maintaining this stormwater facility. And then Peter's here to speak from the attorney's office, and also I have Renee LaCroix here to talk about if you do have questions about the impact of this project on the water quality of Patton Creek, concerns over how it may be impacting the creek and ultimately the estuary, because we did take those things into consideration. We have the staff here to answer any questions that council may have at this time about our request or the project in general.
Okay, thanks Ted, Jack?
Ted, with the construction of the stormwater vault, is the ceiling of the vault, is that exposed to the sky or is it covered with soil and plantings?
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Eric and potentially Larry Sculten to speak to that, it's open, it's got plantings and it's not an enclosed vault, as you might envision some vaults being where it's all four sides closed, it is open at the top.
Oh, it's open, okay.
Yeah, so Eric, do you want to add to that?
It's both open on the top, and I believe it's open on the bottom as well, so you're allowing water to come up through the system, come up through a bubbler, and infiltrate down through a filter media, and then infiltrate down into a subline, an underlying subsurface of granular soils to function as some infiltration. There's also infiltration being constructed on Harris, west of Eighth as well.
Okay, so it'll be, it'll be a fenced type of facility?
There will be a barrier along the Eighth Street alignment to prevent people from falling into that, yes. It won't be a fence, but it'll be more, I don't, we haven't quite figured out what those details would be, but it would be a barrier to prevent somebody from falling in.
Okay.
Terry?
Yeah, the settlement agreement, that, in looking at it, that, that only goes into effect, is that, the, when the pavement is removed for the building in conjunction with the building of, what is it, the harbors?
Fairhaven Harbor.
Fairhaven Harbor, is that correct?
Yeah, and so the settlement agreement was specific to that particular development, which never occurred, and the land use entitlements, the permits that went with that development have expired. And so when we considered the stormwater facility from staff's perspective, the settlement agreement was gone, we are now permitting a stormwater facility, and I don't know if Steve wants to speak to that anymore, but it was, you're correct, it was very specific to the previous development.
And so even with this in effect, if we're not removing the pavement, we're asking for a one-way street as opposed to removing of the pavement, so even if this was in effect, that shouldn't, it shouldn't affect that, should it?
Real difference between what the staff's proposal is now and the settlement agreement was, was whether or not the street was one-way or fully closed. The width of the paved surface is very similar, because even in the previous settlement agreement, it was not as though the paved surface was removed and replanted, there was a hard surface there for emergency service access, and actually is very specific about the load requirements and things of that nature. So the big difference is, is it going to be a one-way street or is it going to be closed? The staff's perspective, one of the challenges with closing it altogether is it requires a bit additional work right here, and, you know, that does have some impact. By not doing that, it gives us this area, a little bit more area right here to replant, and, you know, it's a bit of a wash from our perspective, and Renee can speak to that a little bit more than I can, in terms of the impact on the riparian area and ultimately the creek, whether we close this altogether and build the turnaround, or we provide the one-way access, we're actually suggesting that it's a better, more environmentally friendly project to build it the way we're suggesting.
Any other questions? Jack?
Can you, you said that we had a grant associated with this and we're all, we're already under contract to build it?
Yeah, so we awarded contract, we do have a grant from the Department of Ecology, there's city stormwater rate money in it as well, it's under contract, the work is well underway at this point. So as Eric mentioned, there's some, still some details that are to be worked out in the ultimate construction of the project, but there's work underway, it's happening right now, and the vault is under construction, some of the piping and associated work is well underway.
Is the grant also associated with the, with the pavement section of the street?
Yeah, it is, because the project was, that was a condition of permit, and so even though the money was a stormwater grant specific for water treatment, water quality treatment, stormwater runoff, as with all of our stormwater projects, there's a restoration component of it, that's also eligible cost for the stormwater grant. And so, yeah, so the grant money pays for restoration of the traveled way.
Since you're under contract right now, then would you be doing a change order if you wanted to put forward the one-way approach?
So in order, in order to make the change to the design plans to go from the two-way twenty-foot wide or twenty-two-foot wide street to a different configuration with a twelve-foot wide asphalt with some additional siding, would be a change order, but I would, that change in and of itself would not see that as a large magnitude or a large increase in the cost, would probably be fairly neutral in that and well within our affordability for that, for the project. The project was about a $1.2 million project, and so the changes we would talk about making from the two-way to the one-way street would be minimal compared to the overall total project cost.
And how long would it take for the design work to be done in order to accomplish that, that solution versus the one that you've signed under contract?
We need to check with our engineers, but a couple of weeks, a couple of weeks. And we have a couple of, amount of, we have time between where they're at right now and when they would need to start doing the construction, but not a whole lot of time. If we were to tell the engineers tomorrow, we need this change made, we would need that back within a couple of weeks so we can give the contractor time to get himself ready. I'm not too worried about the changes we need to make for the contractor's perspective, the increased costs would be marginal and reasonable for what we're trying to accomplish here, but we do have time to make those decisions for a couple of weeks.
Well, given the holidays, because the next time I think the council is going to have any sort of real-
January eleventh.
January eleventh.
Yep.
If we didn't make a decision today, can you wait till January eleventh?
Yes, we could probably wait till the second meeting in January to get the decision made as well.
Okay, what are the wishes of the council, Dan?
I move that we, make a motion that we move this to a work session on January eleventh.
I'll second that.
Sure. Okay, most of you, seconded, discussion, Terry?
Yeah, if we move it to the eleventh, I think we should be specific to staff- Yeah, if we move it to the 11th, I think we should be specific to staff about what do we want or need in terms of information we want them to do, you know, if we're, we're setting that over, because I'm assuming, because I, I know I was thinking about, and I'll vote for this, but I was thinking about, and I was wondering what will we accomplish? And, and what is, so what is it we want staff to accomplish between now and then that will help us make a better decision? And I'm, and I'm, I'm trying to think about it myself, so I'm not just throwing it out to you, Dan, for, to put you on the spot. I'm trying to think through this, what, what is it we need?
It's, it's not just what, what we're asking from staff. I just, I need more time to, to go over this proposal. This is pretty-
No, no, that, and that in and of itself is enough. I'm just, yeah. But, but I'm thinking, if we, there's anything we want information from staff, this is probably the time.
And, and if you don't have the questions ready today, that's understandable, certainly email us, and we can respond to the council as a whole to get you information, become up for questions, and be prepared on the, when we do come back.
Yeah, just as we discussed, do you want to have an expectation as to whether there's going to be any sort of public comment? Whether you expect it this evening, whether you expect it on the 11th?
I'm sure there'll probably be public comment tonight, the public comment period. So I think we should just treat this as we treat our normal committee meeting.
Since we do have more time, and there did seem to be some question about, and from some vote, not, that were part of this, maybe not notified or whatever. It sounds like this is a really good plan. And it's, would it be helpful to, you think, to talk to a couple of the, of the other people from, from the neighbors to see if we can get buy-on, buy-in as we go forward?
Yeah, we've spoken to some folks that have, that I know have contacted the council, and we'll certainly continue to reach out to people, and, and perhaps we can provide more information to them prior to council making a decision. We'd be happy to do that.
Okay. And originally, this was on Public Works, Public Safety. I would have, that's where it probably should go to-
Okay.
-for a committee work session. Okay, is there any further discussion? All those in favor of having a work session on January 11th will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0-2. Okay, thank you. Somebody want to round up Mr. Lillicwist, if you can find him? In the, okay, lights, and we'll go on to the next one.
You, you start, I'm ducking out.
Okay, now we're going to have a discussion on the city-specific legislative agenda with Brian Heinrich.
Good afternoon, Brian Heinrich, Mayor's Office. There were three attachments in the packet. One is the, it's a draft, hoping to get direction today. On the city-specific legislative agenda, additionally, there is the joint legislative agenda that we share with Waukam County and Port of Ellingham. And then I also included the Association of Washington City's legislative priorities for the upcoming session. So if all right with you, just walk quickly through, for the state legislature, for the city specific. As you all know, council recently passed a resolution supporting paid, safe, and sick to be advocated for at the, the state level. We'll make sure that our delegation and AWC receive that resolution. In addition, this is, the next one under, or I'm, I'm sorry, related to housing is supporting a tax credit for multifamily buildings. If they implement energy efficiency, this is something that we supported last session. And under economic, or, in related economic development, supporting the Tourism Marketing Act. This is something that also was introduced last year in legislature, did not, it passed the House, did not pass the Senate, I believe. And then under, I did want to mention one other additional item, just over the course of this past week, wasn't able to get in the packet, but talking to some stakeholders in the solar sector, solar energy sector, about promoting and incentive to promote the installation of solar systems through 2020. This is an existing effort that's, that currently exists in the state, and they continue to work on and refine that legislation. And so I know the mayor was interested in supporting that effort. It would, it's supported by some local folks who are engaged in the solar industry. So with your direction, I would add that solar energy piece to the state portion of the draft agenda. And then two quick items under the, the federal portion of the agenda. Rail safety measures. Congress recently passed a five-year transportation bill, over $300 billion. Details are still emerging over all of the various ways that those dollars will be programmed. Both Ted and I participated on a conference call with Congressman Larson's office, I want to say last Friday. There will be, there is dollars set aside for aggregate crossing measures and, and some oil spill response and safety measures of that, in that regard. So those are emerging in terms of how will that be distributed to the states? Is that a formula grant, or how, you know, those details are still being worked out. And then finally, with referencing the community development block grants, perhaps today, or hopefully this week, Congress will pass a $1.1 trillion spending bill. We expect the block grant funding aspect of that to be included. The details are not out on that. I believe that they may be, that bill may be introduced today if it hasn't already. But we're sort of staying tuned on that. But we've been in touch with representatives of our, of, from Senator Murray and Cantwell office, and Congressman Larson, in terms of supporting block grant funding. Del Benny as well, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Any questions?
Questions, comments? Michael?
Well, the only thing that really isn't called out specifically that I think is really important to us, has to do with housing affordability. There is a section in the AWCs that talks about human services and its interaction with homelessness and affordable housing. It's very general language, and I don't really have anything particularly specific that I know legislature might work on or any particular program. But a lot of things the state does really do affect those programs and housing. I don't know if there's something that can be added, or if that's assumed, because part of the AWC agenda.
On our joint legislative agenda, I believe we reference supporting house affordability. That's of interest to the county as well.
Second to last, here, Brian?
Oh, under criminal justice and social service. I'll, I'll, I'd be interested to see what comes up in this legislative session that we might support.
Sure.
Okay, Jack?
Yeah, I, I had an opportunity last week to talk with the representative of the solar industry, and, and I concur with the mayor as far as that we really should put our endorsement on that legislation in our package. And hopefully it would get passed. It, it seemed somewhat time-critical at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
I think this is a really wonderful legislative agenda. I'm supportive of everything that is on here, and especially including the solar, because it does sunset at the end of 2016. And solar has become very affordable, so anything that we can do to encourage more renewable energy is, I think, a great step forward for our city.
Okay. Mayor?
I just want to add, and Dan, you can chime in, about the mental health funding. Today at our task force group, the lack of mental health beds and the lack of how, of supported housing were two issues that came forward. And the group itself, the task force group, was interested in how they would lobby their legislators and how they would lobby for increased funding, because it sounds like they're going to cut, or there's a proposal to cut Medicaid rate reimbursements, which is the absolute opposite way that we should be going to get good healthcare professionals in our community. So I, I, I think we could leave it, you know, kind of broad, but it may behoove us to talk about with our legislative lobbyist representatives when they come, if there was a way that we can tie those interests that are community-wide. They're not, they're, they're on our agendas, but they're also community-wide, and using other people from the community to go down and potentially testify at hearings, or meet with our representatives, because then it's not just the councils and our lobbyists, but it's community members too that have an interest in something. I don't know, Dan, if you want to add anything to that?
Just to confirm and support what the mayor just said, in terms of, we, we're going in the wrong direction, broadly speaking, in terms of some closures around mental health and chemical dependency beds. 108 beds are going to be going away relatively quickly. Those are regional beds. Those are shared across state, I believe. So we, we do need to work on behalf of prioritizing these, the mental health and chemical dependency. Mental health certainly, it feeds into incarceration, it feeds into housing, the, the topics that are brought up here and with other council members. So I just want to support the mayor in saying that we do need to prioritize that, that mental health.
Okay. You got enough direction, Brian?
I believe I do. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, the next item is a contract agreement with Yakima County for as-needed jail services. Peter?
Yeah, Peter Raffato, City Attorney's Office. You have before you an inter-local agreement with Yakima County that we're asking for approval. This is a contract for as-needed jail services. As we informed the council at the last meeting, this is sort of one of four approaches that we've been working on to try to impact the jail population. And those, those four prongs include continuing diversion practices and programs that we have. Secondly, looking at what we're calling sort of more low-hanging fruit, or changes that can occur more quickly, hopefully in coordination with the county and better utilizing specific jail alternative programs. Third, are some of the, the broader discussions that we've been, we've been having in, in terms of programs that, diversion programs, whether it's pre-arrest or some, some bigger process changes. But if at all possible, again, moving on to the fourth approach, we would prefer that inmates be kept at Waukam County, but if necessary, given what we've been told by Waukam County, we feel it's necessary to have this contract in place. And having said that, I think we will continue even on this fourth prong, as needed, exploring other options. I mean, the SCORE facility, I think was mentioned by the sheriff. I've had some discussions with that facility. This is as needed, so we're not bound to use this facility for any particular length of time or to any particular degree. So those discussions will continue as well. And I think the, the picture in my mind is trying to get that right mix of contracts and programs in place to really impact the jail population. The Yakima facility does have onsite medical and mental health staff. They have metal, medical and mental health intake. By the 14th day, all inmates are required to have a physical. That's subsequent to an actual initial medical and mental health intake. We are working on all the capabilities for inmates to have, well, they will have immediately access to public defender services via online. And in addition to that, short, in the short term, Yakima will be able to provide Skype-like visitation. They have, the Yakima facility has programs, including moral recognition therapy, inmate, an inmate worker program, faith-based services, strong families. They have certifications for flagrant forklift operator, certain classes for managing self-destructive behavior, anger management, being a responsible tenant, among others. And probably most importantly, the Yakima facility, as far as my research, has the most robust transportation capabilities, which is going to be something necessary, because the Waukam County facility will still be the city's booking facility. So if, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those, but that's-
Michael?
Well, I think it's important that we do have a backup plan, and I really like the fact this is an as-needed program. I just have a small question. Sheriff Elfo, in his letter, and this and the other item, mentions that there's a facility in Des Moines we might want to look at. Have we looked at that one? We don't, we can go ahead and, you know, rate, approve this agreement and still keep looking, I suppose?
That's correct. That, that facility is the SCORE facility. I don't remember the exact acronym, but it's, it's the South Correctional Facility. This was a facility that was, it's an entity that was created with several municipal jurisdictions joining together to have a facility, and they do contract with a number of other entities. And I do have, in a contract they sent, I haven't had a chance to go through it with our internal work group to really identify how that could fit within a program, or also on an as-needed basis.
Dan?
I have some questions. I'm referring to page 104 of the packet. This is attachment A around medical acceptability. Some serious concerns around some of these, these are exclusionary conditions that, that Yakima has stated here in this attachment A. Signs of alcohol or drug withdrawal, item eight. Item 19, persons with Alzheimer's, dementia, or other psychological conditions, to the point where they cannot form, perform activities of daily living. Number 20, people who are diagnosed as developmentally delayed. And on the next page, 105, number 26, persons taking methadone, Suboxone, or a substitute for methadone. And number 27, persons with suicidal ideations or gestures within, within the past 72 hours. So my concern is that this, this could be some of the inmates that enter, the, are booked in the Waukam County facility. We, Waukam County is either the third or first, depending on, on who you talk to, most heroin and opiate-addicted county in Washington State. So the, the piece with the number 26, Suboxone is the treatment for people who are addicted to heroin or, or opiate medication. So I'm just concerned that we might see some folks that are, they're withdrawing, or they're, or they might have a cognitive delay, or some type of mental health illness that may or may not breach the threshold here. I just wanted to get your take on that.
Yeah, I'd like to, there's sort of three points. Number one, we had several conversations with Ed Campbell, the director of the Yakima County Jail, specifically in reference to their medical acceptability. And he assured me that this was, well, what he did is he basically blamed their attorneys for this document.
That's not true.
But really what they're doing is that they are trying to reserve their rights as much as possible. They need someone who can be transported for a period of time, and, and so they need to protect their rights on that. He anticipates, based on our conversations about our population, that we will not have any problems, that it's extremely rare that anyone is rejected for this. And in fact, they have programs in place to deal with this. But they, they have reserved their rights in this document in that, in that way. The second thing I would say is that, I've talked to three users of the Yakima County Jail, and the, the acceptability issue never came up for those three users. We will continue to evaluate that. The, the primary one being the city of Everett, which actually the city of Everett potentially would be faced with some of the same population issues, and they spoke very highly of the Yakima facility. And the third thing I would say about all that is that, as you know, that's something, those kinds of issues are really being, are the focus of the task force and a lot of the discussions, and trying to come up with solutions, so that those folks, if they're otherwise eligible, would be something that could be addressed through an alternative.
Go ahead.
And then page 106, the property that, item number one, the property shall be sealed in a single property bag, no larger than a common grocery bag. That's what an inmate is allowed to bring in the facility. What happens if the individual is homeless and they have, you know, several possessions, or in some other living situation where they, where they, that, that wouldn't occur as to, as it relates to item number one?
So you're getting into some of the real jail logistics issues that I'm not necessarily the best person to speak to, but my understanding is, is it, is most of these, you will find, Yakima County deals with lots of different facilities. They're not going to be booked in the Yakima County Jail. So I can't answer that for sure, but I think a lot of the, the pro, you know, managing inmate property is something that's pretty standardized throughout the correctional facilities. And so if, if Waukam County, for example, they, they would have been booked into Waukam County, has a much more liberal size of- booked into Wacom County, has a much more liberal size of a bag, then I would be surprised by that. But that's, this is all somewhat, somewhat standard in the industry, so to speak.
Okay. What I'm getting here, or what I'm trying to get to is a broader point. It's not specifically around the medicine around withdrawals or the size of the backpack or whatever. There's also, in item C, there's also classifications that would be exclusionary. These are people that are violent or escape risk. And then, well, let me hold it to that for now. So, what I'm, what I'm trying to get at is, are there scenarios that you can envision where a person, because they, they meet an excluding criteria, they wouldn't be allowed in the Yakima facility? And our jail, if it were overcrowded and that inmate wouldn't be accepted into that facility, where does that inmate go?
Yeah, I'd like, basically, I think we all acknowledge that this is something that we haven't done in the city of Bellingham. So, there's a certain element of a work in progress. And a lot of what we're relying on are assurances by the director, and their, Ed's very much addressed a lot of these issues and is very interested in working with the city of Bellingham to make it work. Might we have, you know, Plan C? Maybe, maybe that's the SCORE facility. So, we will have to continually look at that and, as issues arise, address them.
Eric?
Yeah. Some of the same concerns that we have, you know, that you're raising, is usually raised with the jail itself. They have, there are people they won't take, you know, based on certain mental health conditions and other things. You know, they will have to look at other kind of facilities because the jail can't handle them or certain parts of those. And I think what we're seeing here is pretty much what we see, our jail, the county jails stating their own rules in terms of what they'll accept and what they won't accept, you know. You know, the property stuff, that I know is same thing, you know, they confronted different times. Somebody, you know, homeless person's, you know, arrested or whatever, and they've got their dog, they've got whatever, and, you know, basically from the jail's perspective and whatever, it's, sorry, but that's not going there.
Right. I think that speaks to a broader point of things that we lack in our community, like proper mental health treatment and chemical dependency treatment beds, things that are going away that the mayor just indicated before. So, I know that this is a work in progress. I do realize that. I just don't, I don't want to be in a situation where we have a person that's a danger to themselves or others, and we don't have a place for them to go. So, that's really my broader point.
Okay. Do we have a motion on this item? Michael?
I move to authorize the mayor to enter into agreement with Yakima County for as-needed jail services.
Second.
Okay, motion been made. Second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries six zero. The next item is a contract extension with Wacom County for jail services. Mayor?
I'm gonna let Peter talk about the details, but I want to give you where I think we are right now with the sheriff. I had an opportunity to speak with him after the meeting this morning. We have been back and forth. There's documentation in your packet with the sheriff on, and the county executive on what's going to happen January 1st. Last week, the county council passed a resolution or a contract amendment that was not acceptable, well, wasn't acceptable to me. I don't think it would be acceptable to you because it would exacerbate just what you were talking about, Dan, people being left without us being able to plan for them. So, we had, as a group, as an internal group, gone through and, and kind of itemized the things that we'd like to see in the contract to make it work, all predicated on the fact that our contract expires December 31st, and Jack had said that there would be an addendum, though not the same addendum, we found out, but an addendum to extend the amount of time that we could leave people in the jail. So, we are down to basically one, one issue, and I don't know, do they have copies of this?
I believe so.
Okay. We're down to one issue anyway, and that's whether we're going to have 24 hours to remove someone from the jail. We had asked for seven days. We proposed, they proposed 72 hours. We, we are at 96 hours. It's, but we also acknowledge the fact that the sheriff has authority to make that decision, if there's an emergency, if they reach the levels, or whatever it is. So, I guess what I'm asking Peter to do is to go through this final thing that we'd like you to consider, with the 92 hours in it, and then I'll let him go, go from there. It doesn't mean that the council, because their county council's already approved something else. They would have to come back and approve a different agreement than they've already approved for us. But it's kind of the same thing. We hadn't approved it, and the council approved it. So, we're in the same position that we've been in before. Go ahead, Peter.
So, Peter Ruffato, City Attorney's Office. So, what I'm referring to and what you're being asked in a similar vein is to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement, an extension with Wacom County. It's the, you should have received this in an addendum, I believe, on Friday. And it's, it's part of the agenda bill, but it was received later. There's a cover letter to it, December 11, 2015.
Everybody have that?
I think it's page 147 is the, is the letter, and then the agreement is page 149. And specifically, this is a red line version. We took the county document.
I don't think we have it, Peter.
Yeah.
Okay, she's gonna go get it. So, you said they'd have to come back and vote, the county council?
Well, they won't, they're not going to be coming. I, they're done. And so...
The odds of them coming back aren't good.
But remember, our contract's not expiring until the 31st. So, there, I think when I spoke with Sheriff Elfo today, I made it very clear that we were in the mode to help the, you know, relieve the crowding in the jail and not limit bench warrants and protect public safety and provide good services for people that we are arresting, and that we were still, were very open to working with him, you know, working out the details with him. But that it would help us if we could depend upon a certain number of days. Why don't you explain how that works, Peter?
So, yeah, without the, the actual document in front of you, what we're really, if you look at the correspondence that is in the packet, some general themes, you know, both parties are very concerned about public safety, the integrity of the criminal justice system, and ultimately, for where we are right now, it's a workability issue. The, the contract, the contract extension that was proposed by Wacom County says that they can identify a particular inmate if they're at capacity, and that within two to four hours after the initial appearance, the city would have to receive that inmate back, which means we'd have to have another facility. So, what that means is a practical matter, as I understand it, is we'd have to somehow have a facility or a transportation option on a daily basis to another facility. And then there's another notice provision that says for sentenced inmates, they would give 24 hours' notice. So, to kind of put those numbers in perspective, the current contract, which recognizes that there could be a capacity issue, gives the city 30 days' notice. The Snohomish County contract provides, that's a, that's a template contract that I received Snohomish County, and they have had at times issues with overcrowding, especially with respect to certain populations, 14 days' notice. What the county has in their agreement is two to four hours post that first appearance, or 24 hours' notice if it's a sentenced inmate. So, initially, we requested seven days. But in, we also recognize that the sheriff definitely feels the need to have the flexibility to reduce the population. So, we settled on four days. Four days would give the city that, the possibility of dealing with this on a two-transportation, two-days-per-week-transportation kind of schedule. And the thing to keep in mind is that, you know, we're going to build our plan, our implementation plan, around the document, the expectation. And then, the document that the sheriff proposed does say that the sheriff could extend the time, but it seems to make sense to build the plan around something that's more workable. And if there is an immediate issue, which this document builds that immediacy back into it, the sheriff can take action. We know that there are times when the, at this time, when the, when the jail is at capacity and they need to call a judicial officer to make a decision about which of the various inmates can safely be released. So, those issues can be dealt with on an immediate basis, but it doesn't seem to make sense to have this, what seems to be unworkable as the expectation, and then try to build in the discretion. It seems to make more sense to have something that's workable and then grant the sheriff, which this document that, that we're asking you to approve does, builds in, in the last sentence of the second paragraph, "The county retains the right to take more immediate action if special circumstances require such action." So, so I've kind of given you the, you know, the, the general aspects of it. The other thing that this document does is it grants the city of Bellingham the opportunity to decide how it's going to impact the jail population. The document proposed by the county seems to say, "We will tell the city which inmates need to be, need to be out of the facility within two to four hours or 24 hours." It seems to make more sense for the city of Bellingham, based on public safety, judicial efficiency, to determine which ones are, which inmates are best removed to another facility. And we think we can make some impact in the population, for example, with long-term commitments, if necessary. And that makes a lot more sense in terms of not dealing with pre-trial issues. Again, we recognize, we may have to deal with pre-trial issues, but that wouldn't be the first choice. And so, this language allows the city of Bellingham to receive notice, 96 hours, whether it's pre-trial or sentenced inmates, that you have to get the numbers down, and the city of Bellingham will respond accordingly. The other thing that this agreement provides for towards the bottom are some, some real specific information. The jurisdictions that contract with Wacom County are being asked to manage their jail population. In order to do that, we need to know which inmates are Bellingham-only inmates. The presumption is, is they don't want the city of Bellingham to take inmates out of the jail that are held on Wacom County charges, and that information really has to come from the jail or the county. So, we're asking that that be part of the information that's provided to the city on an ongoing basis, so we can help facilitate impacting the jail population.
Eric?
So, with this agreement, if it is the city that makes the decision on, will it be one of our judge or commissioner that makes that decision, or who, who would make that decision in terms of looking at the jail population and...
That's going to be a decision that's made in combination with the prosecutor and the judge and, and potentially the public defender. But, but the prosecutor is actually going to be a key person in identifying, because we're going to have to figure out, for example, again, longer-term commitments, being able to deal with it in that respect. A lot of it's going to fall on the prosecutor and working with the judicial branch in lining, lining everything up so it can be tracked, and we get folks back at the end of their sentence, and, and those sorts of details.
Hopefully not to make that decision too often. That's...
Hopefully.
Okay. Dan?
Oh, I'm sorry, Peter. No. Again, this is, you know, I think the main thing is that we're, we're granting in the agreement that we're asking you to propose, to approve, the sheriff, ultimate authority to make that immediate decision if necessary, but to build our plans around something that, that is workable. And, and also recognize, as with the, as with the previous discussion about the Yakima contract, this is a work in progress, and we'll be having to work with the county really closely to make this all work.
One other question related, will, when they look at who's held, who's not held kind of thing, do the cities, how, trying to think of how to put the, you know, they hold the misdemeanors for the cities. They also hold prisoners for Border Patrol and for the tribes. Is there an order in terms of how they look at that since, in terms of when we were looking at building the jail, it was the cities and the county that were the main participants in terms of doing that? So, I would assume under that one, we would have standing above the tribes and the Border Patrol, but is that, is there anything in any of this that indicates how they look at that?
So, as it stands right now, my understanding is that the agreement that the county council approved, the sheriff presented and was approved, wasn't the same agreement that was going to be offered to the city of Bellingham, all the other cities, and I believe the Lemmy Tribe, but I'm not positive about that. In terms of that priority, all I know is what the sheriff has told us, it isn't really built into the agreement. And what he told us is that they were going to have to look hard at long-term commitments, keeping in mind that the Lemmy Tribe, I think, uses the facility for very long-term commitments, like years.
Yeah.
And I think the sheriff also said that they were going to stop accepting DOC holds, but I don't, I don't know what the current thinking is on that.
Okay, because there's a lot of, you know, I know they do a lot of different things other than the city, the city's holds, which are small.
So, many inmates in the facility, in Wacom County Jail, have charges in multiple jurisdictions, or they, or they have warrants in multiple jurisdictions, or failures to appear in various places. Who, whose responsibility are they?
I can only say that.
If they are indeed, if Bellingham is in that list of jurisdictions.
Right now, I think it would be very difficult for them to figure that out on a short, in a, in a short-term basis. The undersheriff, Jeff Parks, was saying that that is very complicated information, and, and that is something we'd have to determine because we also, if it's someone that has a Bellingham misdemeanor warrant and a felony, obviously that person would be staying here in Wacom County in the jail. So, we, so we need to know if it's Bellingham-only warrants or multiple warrants. So, I'll let Darlene, she's, she's the smart one about that. But that, that was the conversation I had today with the undersheriff, which is, it sounds like Darlene gets information about our, about our inmates, but the county doesn't necessarily know today.
Darlene Peterson, Court Administrator, Municipal Court. We've been doing some research because one of the struggles that we've had is that the jail has not been providing us exactly how many inmates we have at any one time in the jail. They do provide some public information, and they do on their website, and so we've been doing some research into that. And we've been able to identify Bellingham-only inmates, and those are really the inmates that we would hope to be able to deal with first. When they have multiple warrants out of multiple jurisdictions, we would not necessarily be able to move them to another facility. For instance, if they have a warrant in Superior Court or a charge going in Superior Court and one in Municipal Court, both jurisdictions are responsible. One doesn't take precedence over another. Both of those cases are running. And so, by identifying the inmates that are Bellingham-only, and then also dividing that into the ones who've already completed their cases and are just serving sentences, in comparison with the ones who are pre-trial and just working on their sentences, that will help us to have the ability to decide if we have to send people to Yakima or another facility, which ones to send. Our hope is that if we did end up having to use Yakima and send people long-term, it would be the ones who've already been sentenced. And we do have misdemeanor inmates who have longer sentences, ones that have maybe probation violations and revocations, DWS firsts, that they have mandatory days that they have to serve. We'd much rather enable a way, if we have to send prisoners away, to have those kinds of prisoners leave and go to another facility if we're forced into that situation, so that the ones that are short-term, and many of our misdemeanor charges have very short jail sentences, they would stay here, they would take care of it, and they would serve those here, rather than trying to take them back and forth to work on charges. serve those here, rather than trying to take them back and forth to work on charges. Does that help at all, answer your question or provoke any others?
Okay. Pinky then, Michael.
Peter, I'm trying to follow along here. Did you say that the other small cities and the Lummi are having a similar inter-local agreement, or we're the only ones being asked in the county?
What I was told this morning was that they want a uniform agreement with all the cities. That is the county's choice. And that if they agreed to something different with us, then they'd have to go back to the other cities and have them agree to it, too, a different agreement. They want it to be consistent. I don't know if that is a choice that they're making or if they have to. But that's, that's what I was told this morning.
Peter?
But they're not in conversation, I don't think, with them right now.
And so Brian just reminded me, I know I looked at the council agenda, and he reminded me that all of the small cities, except for NUCSEC, are basically being presented with the same agreement that the county council approved. I don't know how they envisioned they would deal with a two- or four-hour, 24-hour notice.
Michael?
Sorry. Well, if you're seeking direction, I mean, I really appreciate where you're going with this. I think it's very important that we have a practical response interval. And the other thing we're asking for is the information necessary to respond in a timely fashion and wisely. So I'm fully in support of the direction that the administration is taking these negotiations. I think we've acknowledged the general principle that the sheriff has ultimate authority on an emergency basis. And we've acknowledged kind of the more practical thing, that on a non-emergency basis, he still needs to be able to plan to reduce the numbers. And we're cooperating with that. So, you know, speaking for myself, I appreciate the direction the administration's taking the negotiations.
Is that a motion? We need a motion.
Yeah. So I would, I would, we'll provide direction. I move that the council endorses the direction the administration is taking the jail agreement discussion.
Okay.
Second.
Motion been made second. Any discussion? All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven, six zero.
So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna transmit the language that Peter has come up with to the county. The sheriff said he would look at it again and consider the changes that we're proposing. And then, I guess, the ball's in their court. Anybody have anything to add to that? I want to really thank our internal jail team for how much work they've been doing, Brian and Brian and Peter and Darlene. It's, we're really lucky to have Darlene working on our staff because she has a very good working knowledge of both what's happening in our municipal court and what happens in the county courts. So we're pretty lucky to have her.
Okay.
We're lucky to have you.
Thank you all. Thank you, darling. We have one set of minutes, the December 7th committee meetings. Move approval?
Second.
Motion been made second. Any discussion? All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six zero. Older new business. Mr. Boardman.
Yeah, I've got one item. Marie, again, has been working on the annual Martin Luther King celebration, and we've been working with her, and we have its lineup set. So I just wanted to announce that we, Monday, January 18th, at noon, City Hall will be having the MLK celebration, and the Chalston Chorus is gonna be performing again. Speakers will be Mayor Kelly Linville, Annika Walters, Jamie Donaldson, Cedric Johnson, and it'll be emceed by Roxanne Murphy. Just encourage people to come out. It's always a quite a stirring event.
This is it, Mr. Weiss. The last time I'll ask if you have any older new business.
I got nothing to say.
You got a lot to say tonight. Boy, where's that been for eight years, huh? Mr. Hamblin.
Maybe tonight.
Yeah. You could filibuster all night long, you know, if you want to, so. He could. He probably could do it. So go ahead, Dan.
I've got a couple of items. I'm just gonna piggyback on the last discussion regarding incarceration and just to say that, you know, I'm really strongly supporting and encouraging that we move forward and look at some of the options that Spokane, Spokane County have implemented or are looking at as a result of their blueprint for reform and Bennett Report, both from 2008 and 2013. We've discussed, I've discussed with the mayor and city attorney and Darlene Peterson just some alternatives to incarceration. And a lot of this is not anything new, but I did, was able to meet with them as part of the incarceration reduction and task force, the members of the city that serve on that. And we did discuss community court, a jail alts kiosk, electronic home monitoring, and then also a program that the Opportunity Council put forward and actually implemented in 2012, was a pilot program that did case management with 25 offenders that were characterized as super-utilizers of the system. This was back in 2012, and had amazing results. So those discussions are ongoing. I just want to put them at the record. The other item I wanted to bring up was that I've been having some discussions about pump tracks. And these are fairly low-cost infrastructure facilities, about 15,000 square feet, they cost about $25,000. Most of that can be in-kinded. And these are, they're, they sound, they look like what they sound like, basically. So they're a track that has little things that look like jumps, and any kid who can ride a bike can take any bike, basically, and use this to develop skills and confidence and so forth. There've been other, many other cities that have done these in parks and at schools and so forth, and have been having some just discussions with Leslie Bryson, Rick Seppler and the mayor, and been working with several advocacy groups and mountain bike manufacturers and such that are very supportive of finding an appropriate place to do this. And I just want to say that I want to follow the appropriate steps to, as this thing rolls forward, to work with the Parks Board. I did notify Councilmember Murphy, who's the, who's on the Parks Chair person, that we are in this kind of discussion phase of where this could be. So we, that's where we're at, and I just wanted to bring that forward.
Okay. Anything else? Mayor?
I'll just piggyback on what Dan's saying. I think it's a good discussion to have, especially when we're looking at in-kind contributions. We need to look at integration into the pro-plan, all the things that the city's responsible for. But we never want to turn down an opportunity for the community to add to our park system or our recreational opportunities. So I appreciate Dan talking to me about it. And it might be worth a discussion about, in general, if someone wants to help us, kind of, what do we do about that? But the main reason that I wanted to take a minute is to announce that I have appointed Leslie Bryson, our new Parks Director. And I am thrilled. Did you stand up and take a bow? Come down here and say hello. I think Leslie is absolutely the right person that we need right now because she is so familiar with the development of our parks, obviously, from her previous job. And she has a lot of experience working with our department heads, obviously with me and with the council, as Dan just mentioned her name today. So I am really excited. I got good feedback from the Parks staff. I got good feedback from the Parks Board and from department heads, who have enjoyed already working with Leslie. So I just wanted to let you know, we've got a Parks Director, and she's promised to be here for four years. Even if she's a grandma now. Leslie?
Congratulations, Leslie.
Thank you, Mayor and council. It's exciting for me and an honor to be named as the next Parks and Recreation Director. Living in this community, it's just a joy to work with a community who's so supportive of our Parks and Recreation Department, our programs and facilities, and work with our staff, who are professional, dedicated, and passionate about what they do. And I continue, I look forward to continuing to providing that high level of quality service that we provide to the community, and working on new opportunities like pump tracks and pickleball courts. And it's an ever-changing world that we live in. So it's exciting. Thank you.
Okay. Congratulations. Okay. Is there anything else to come before the council? Okay. We will see you all tonight. The roasting begins at 7:00.